Is this everybody?
This is everybody. Going on Skeleton Crew, you guys.
Yeah, we are.
Oh, that was a little static.
Amir.
This is gonna be cool. You got your microphone on?
I know. All right, it's five o'clock and we'd like to get this meeting started. Welcome to all of our honored guests. We're really excited to have everyone here, so welcome to our meeting. We'd like to excuse Chair Gina Worthen. She and David Erickson both are down at a Utah Association County meeting. And will be there today, tomorrow, and Thursday. And we have other members that will be going down tomorrow. Reminder, if you'll please sign the signup sheet as attending this meeting. It's over here by Mr. Bradfield. If you'll please do that, we would appreciate it. And before we get going, I'd like to ask the council's permission to make a little bit of an amendment on the agenda. After our minutes follow-up, I'd like to go down to 7B, the proclamation, and then the presentation of the awards after that. Is that all right with everyone?
Sounds good to me.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. All right, we will now have the presentation of the colors and the pledge by the Cache County Sheriff Honor Guard.
Honor Guard. Up to hand. Hoot! Carry. Hup! Forward! Mark! Will the audience please rise? Ready? Hup! Present! Hup! Will the audience please repeat the Pledge of Allegiance after me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order! Hup! Ready? Hup! Forward! Mark! The audience may be seated. Honor Guard, this is.
That was very nice. Thank you very much. That was really nice. That adds a lot to our meeting here. All right, do I have a motion to approve the agenda, the revised agenda?
So moved.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Back up.
Yep, back up. Nolan, you have any words?
Thought I'd skip.
No.
I'm gonna keep going for it.
Thank you.
I do. It's my honor and privilege to have a few comments as we start this meeting. My father served in the Battle of the Bulge, and I grew up with a lot of respect for the flag. And so this is deeply touching, and I think as I can speak as a council, you men and women who serve in the armed services and the police department and the sheriff and all of that, you have our support and our admiration. Appreciate all you do. And I would like to make my comments, opening comments, in the form of a prayer. My Father in Heaven, we come before this time as we take an opportunity to meet as a community and to discuss the events and the things which need to go on here. We pause at this time to give thanks to those men and women who serve and protect us, and especially to those who risk their lives daily for our peace and freedom which we enjoy this land. We give thanks to those who do this, and we give thanks to the men and women who serve and protect this country in all facets and corners of this world. We pray thy blessings to be upon them. We pray thy blessings to be upon this land, that we may remain free and that we may enjoy the freedoms which so many people have given their lives for, and that we may cherish that. May we go forth in this public meeting tonight and do it in a manner that is respectable and according to thy wishes. And we give thanks for this, and we do so in saith, in the name of thy Son Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Nolan. Thank you. All right, now we'll jump to review and approval of the agenda.
Move approval? Second.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Any against? Okay, very good. Thank you. All right, do we have any review and approval of the minutes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you very much. All right, we haven't, is there any minutes follow-up that we want to follow up on? No? All right, let's jump down to 7B where we'll turn the time over to our sheriff, actually Mr. Zook, and our sheriff. And this is Law Enforcement Week.
Yes, Sheriff Jensen, will you please join me up here? I'd like to have Sheriff Jensen join me here in representation of the good men and women in his department. And I just want to echo what Councilmember Gunnel just said, and especially at a time when many in our country are showing disrespect or a lack of value for law enforcement, I just want to say that we love our law enforcement here in Cache County, and we support them. And I'm going to read a proclamation now that I hope conveys that. Whereas, the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th, 2021, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week of May 9th through 15th, 2021, as National Law Enforcement Week. And whereas, the members of the Cache County Sheriff's Office play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of Cache County residents. And whereas, it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas, the men and women of the Cache County Sheriff's Office unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore, in recognition of all law enforcement officers, and in particular, the men and women of the Cache County Sheriff's Office, the Cache County Executive of Cache County, State of Utah hereby proclaims the week of May 9th through May 15th, 2021, as Law Enforcement Week, and call upon all citizens of Cache County and all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe this week with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered and dedicated service to their communities, and in so doing have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. And I proclaim Saturday, May 15th, 2021, as Peace Officers Memorial Day. I further call upon all citizens of Cache County to honor those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice to their community and have become disabled in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand an official seal this 11th day of May 2021. Thank you, Sheriff.
Appreciate it very much.
Okay, thank you very much, Council and Madam Chair and County Executive, for letting us be here tonight. This is a great week for law enforcement. And we started this week with a flag ceremony that we traded off every year, and this was our year to do it at the Sheriff's Office, and we invited all of law enforcement to be part of that flag ceremony, and it was fantastic. Last night, we had a banquet, so to speak, and fed and met together as friends and as family and as spouses and kids, of the members of the Sheriff's Office family, and it's great to get to know one another that way as well. This week is a special week. It's certainly is, we're, this week is to support law enforcement. It's also remember those who have, who have lost their lives in the performance of their duties. Cache County has had four deputies over the years who have, who have fallen in the service and the sacrifice of the citizens of Cache County. To me, the equally is important for what this week represents and what it means to me and to us, and I hope all the citizens, is to also express our gratitude and to recognize those who excel in this profession and the great deeds that they've done throughout the year. We're gonna talk about a few of those tonight, but I can tell you from where I sit, there's hundreds and hundreds of fantastic things that our deputies do every single day, both on patrol, in the jail, in investigations. Most of those things just kind of go unnoticed and untalked about. What we hear about mostly in the news are the horrible things that happen in law enforcement, but there is so many great things that just happened right here in our own valley. I wish we could go through every single one of those, but we're gonna specifically talk about a few of them tonight. So with that, I'd like to get started on the awards portion of tonight's meeting. So if we could have Lieutenant Hall please come up front, also Deputy Randy Adams. And while he's walking up here, I'll read what the Outstanding Achievement Award is for each division. The Outstanding Achievement Award is presented to a deputy or staff member that excelled in the performance of their duty above and beyond that which is required during their daily course of work. They have exercised competence and have been able to inspire others to improve their quality of work. Deputy Randy Adams was initially assigned as the Work Release Coordinator, but with the change in personnel and the onset of COVID-19 pandemic, his assignments expanded to include the duties of Work Diversion Coordinator and Firearms Instructor as well. He often volunteers for overtime and special assignments and takes it upon himself to accomplish many tasks others have been unwilling to do. Supervisors and deputies alike have made many comments regarding Deputy Adams' work ethic, his dependability, and his level-headed approach to assignments. It is with great pleasure I award the Outstanding Achievement Award for the Jail Division to Deputy Randy Adams. Congratulations. Outstanding Achievement Award, Deputy Daniel Holtz. Thanks, I appreciate it. And just while he's walking up here, all those who are receiving the awards tonight, when the awards portion of this is over, we will meet out in the lobby for pictures and some more discussions. Okay, Outstanding Achievement Award for the Jail Division as well, Deputy Daniel Holtz. Over the past year, Deputy Holtz has taken on the responsibility and supervision of repainting the jail's interior surfaces and resurfacing of the floors. He utilized, coordinated, and supervised multiple inmates during this project, making sure they had the equipment and materials to complete the job. Holtz took on his project without being asked. This was a vast undertaking, which preserved county funds and otherwise would have been used to pay for professionals to do this type of work. Deputy Holtz has also been the team leader for the gang unit for the past two years. Deputy Holtz has planned the majority of recent trainings and built relationships with other agencies to share the gang intelligence. He is a great asset to the Sheriff's Office and to the citizens of Cache County, and with a great pleasure, I award the Outstanding Achievement Award for the Jail Division to Deputy Daniel Holtz. Lieutenant Peck. The Outstanding Achievement Award for the Support Services Division, I'd like to invite Sergeant Candace Hatch to please come forward. Over the past few years, the idea of Peer Support Group for Law Enforcement Officers has taken hold in the state of Utah as well as throughout the nation. This is a direct result of the high number of officers who struggle with the stresses of daily job, which too often result in failed marriages, poor relationships, problems at work, and suicide. During the past year, Sergeant Candace Hatch has taken the lead in implementing and creating a peer support team for the Cache County Sheriff's Office. She has worked on a system that will allow staff members who are struggling to get help. This includes getting help from licensed therapists. Sergeant Hatch worked with other county employees to help with the grant that covers the cost of these therapists. Sergeant Hatch has also reached out, bringing training to the office to ensure that peer support team members have the training and education they need to be of benefit to those who seek their help. And it was great pleasure, I award the Outstanding Achievement Award for the Support Service Division to Sergeant Candace Hatch. While you're still here. I'd like to invite Sergeant Chad Kerr. Okay, in 2019, me as the sheriff began looking at the possibility of creating a probation unit at the Cache County Sheriff's Office. Sergeant Kerr was chosen to lead this group of agents and has done an outstanding job. There have been many challenges putting this unit together. The agents assigned to this unit had to learn an entirely new set of job duties and a new mindset in working with probationers. Sergeant Kerr had to be flexible as changes occur on a weekly basis. Sergeant Kerr has spent hundreds of hours working with court staff and judges to get the county probation program into the courts. He has shown patience and the ability to adapt as he led this program and leads it forward. And it was with great pleasure, I award the Outstanding Achievement Award for the Support Services Division to Sergeant Chad Kerr. Patrol Division, I'd like to invite Deputy Hayden Humphries. And while he's walking up here, over the past year, Deputy Humphries was asked to serve as the Office Representative of the Cache Valley Transit District, and he volunteered as a regional representative in Utah for the Crisis Intervention Team. Deputy Humphries was also asked to become an instructor on de-escalation for the Sheriff's Office and was assigned to improve the curriculum for that training. Because of Deputy Humphries' high level of engagement, initiative, and performance, it is with great pleasure, I award the Outstanding Achievement Award for the Patrol Division to Deputy Hayden Humphries. I can get Floyd Powell, please come forward. Floyd is one of our Animal Control deputies. Over the last several years, Animal Control Officer Floyd Powell has diligently, diligently served our community. He served us while Animal Control Program was in infancy and helped us to continue the program and develop standards. Floyd demonstrates a passion to serve. One key, passion to serve. One of the key problem-solving opportunities Floyd has worked on, the process of following up on dog registrations, his advice and follow-through, further demission of the Cache County Sheriff's Office. We would like to thank Floyd for his diligent and dedicated service to the citizens of Cache County and the Cache County Sheriff's Office. It is with great pleasure, I award the Outstanding Achievement Award for the Patrol Division to Floyd Powell. Okay, this is a unit citation. I would like to invite Sergeant Damian Openshaw and Deputies Colton Peterson, Todd Higbee, and Hayden Humphries to please come forward. And while they're making their way up here, these individuals are brought together to identify inconsistencies that exist in our training in two very important areas, felony stops and de-escalation. They were asked to reduce the redundancy and to create a standard for all the current and future instructors. The group identified areas of concern and revised them. Their efforts will not only help our staff assess dangerous situations more quickly, but keep our deputies and our citizens and community safer. And it was great pleasure, I award this unit citation to Sergeant Damian Openshaw, along with Deputies Hayden Humphries, Todd Higbee, and Colton Peterson. I'd like to have Deputy Ret Gar and Deputy Seneca Holt please start your way up, and this is a life-saving award. The life-saving ribbon is presented to an employee who was directly involved in saving the life of another, for actions if not taken would have most likely resulted in death of a person whether on or off duty. On June 1st, 2019, Deputy Ret Gar and Deputy Seneca Holt were dispatched to an accident on Airport Road. The incident involved a motorcyclist who had sustained significant injuries. The initial observation was thought that the patient only had a dislocated shoulder, a laceration to his head, and possible broken ribs. The patient was noncompliant and combative, is the EMS personnel, and he refused medical treatment. Based on the evidence collected at the scene, Deputies Gar and Holt were able to determine the patient had been driving under the influence of alcohol. Knowing the patient would refuse medical treatment unless in custody, they arrested the patient, and instead of taking him directly to jail, they took him to the hospital. By doing this, they chose to look after the welfare of this man instead of pursuing a criminal offense. After the patient arrived at the hospital and was checked by medical professionals, it was determined his head injury was more serious than previously anticipated. We later learned that this patient had a brain bleed and a fractured skull in addition to a collapsed lung, broken collarbone, and severe road rash. Had it not been for Deputy Gar and Deputy Holt's quick thinking, this man could have died from his injuries. Their acknowledgement of criminal law and concern for him saved his life. And it was with great pleasure, I award the life-saving ribbon to Deputy Ret Gar and Deputy Seneca Holt. And last but not least, this is a ribbon that we came up with this year that really, it's only one piece of what has gone on all of last year and what we're dealing with so far this year, and it's the COVID-19 pin. Regardless of what everybody, whatever side you fall upon on COVID, it's had a huge impact on what's, what our jobs have been and what's taken place in law enforcement. And it's been my privilege to be the sheriff of all these fine young, or young, because they're all younger than I am, is these fine men and women who serve the citizens of Cache County. It's impressive to watch our citizens work together during this terrible time and the support and recognition they show to the members of our office. It's been humbling to see the staff work through the association's problem with this pandemic and to come to work with a smile on their face, a determination to protect and serve the citizens of this valley. Many of our employees, regardless of what was going on around them, they volunteered to cover shifts for employees, family members of employees. Kids, members of employees who tested positive for COVID and couldn't come to work because of the restrictions there. They came to work when they didn't have to do that. They volunteered to do that. We had a list of people wanting to do that. They reached out to their friends, to the families of those who were affected by this horrible event in our office, and they made sure that they were taken care of, that meals were taken, that phone calls were made, and that our staff wasn't forgotten during this time. Last year was, it was a crazy, crazy time in our world and in our valley. Horrible things get said about law enforcement. Horrible things have been highlighted, and some of those things should have been highlighted because they were big mistakes that's taken place in law enforcement and places in our country. Those horrible events don't just happen other places, but they shouldn't also, they shouldn't reflect on every law enforcement officer in the entire country. I have more pride, more respect in the example that all these men and women set for me and what they do for our community is they overcome all these negative things that get said about law enforcement, and we are fortunate to have every one of them serve the citizens of our county. With that, and I don't think even our employees know that, the pin says COVID. And COVID was a crazy year, and it did change a lot of things. It changed things forever. We won't do our job the same tomorrow as we did the same time last year because things moved on. But for everything all of our staff did for the entire year, we'd just like to recognize them, and we will all be receiving a pin for the last year's service. And just give them a round of applause for their dedication. And with that, we have one more group, and I'd like to invite Deputy Seneca Holt up here. She represents the administration of our Cache County Sheriff's Office Deputies Association, and they have some words they would like to give out as well.
So not only is this National Law Enforcement Week, but May is also Mental Health Month. And the Cache County Deputies Association would like to recognize two individuals that have made mental health for our staff and their families a priority. Sergeant Reed Tanner and Sergeant Candace Hatch, can you come up, please? These two individuals have worked tirelessly to bring mental health out of the shadows and into our discussions. They have set up peer support teams, avenues through which staff can discreetly seek professional help. These sergeants have been open and approachable, have helped many people seek positive mental health, their actions have had untold consequences, and the staff are and will be better because of them. Congratulations.
Okay, with that, Madam Chair and Council, if we can excuse us to disrupt your meeting for five more minutes while we go out in the lobby, we'd appreciate that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For your support and everything that the council and does for us and the Sheriff's Office. Thank you.
Well, we thank you. And I think, sorry, I have a great love for these people for all that they do. But I also want to mention their families for the support that they give to their people that are out in the field. It's really important that they have that support. And we, as a council, I'm sure, on behalf of the council, want each and every one of you to know how much we appreciate that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We'll disrupt the meeting and let it move on. Thank you very much.
Out there goes everybody. Yeah. All right, thank you, Executive Zook, for introducing that. We appreciate that. Thank you. All right, let's go to Item 6, Report of County Executive. Executive Zook.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. We have no appointments for you this evening, but I do have the April 2021 Expense Report Warrant Register I'll pass down to you for your signature. And I have a couple of other items that I'll just briefly report on. As Deputy Holt just mentioned, this month is Mental Health Awareness Month. And as I reported to you earlier this year, I called a task force meeting a couple of months ago to impress the suicide epidemic that we've been facing here in our county. One of the things that came out of that, that meeting of that task force was the need to get more information about available resources out to citizens of our county. And an idea that came up from the, the task force was that we could have an event to help get resources out. So on May 1st, we hosted here on our grounds of the historic courthouse, the, the first ever Mental Health and Suicide Prevention Walk. There were more than 200 residents who attended. There were more than a dozen different organizations there with information and resources that they made available to the public. It was a great success, and everyone involved feels united in the thought that this will be maintained as an annual event. So just want to thank everybody who helped with that, especially the Suicide Prevention Task Force members and the Bear River Health Department and Bear River Mental Health. They were, there were many volunteers who helped, and it was a successful event. Another item I wanted to report to you about, Sean Millen, our Economic Development Director, and I had a great meeting with the Economic Development Corporation of Utah where we met with multiple, do you remember how many it was, Sean, that we met with?
It would have been thirty-plus.
Yeah, thirty-plus businesses that we met with. It was kind of interesting. It was done, it was done virtually. It was kind of a virtual speed dating where we were able to give a, a short spiel about the great things about our county, and we had over thirty different businesses from around the state who chimed in at different times during the day to listen to information about our county and some of the great things that we have to offer here. So it was a good opportunity, and I want to thank the Economic Development Corporation of Utah for setting that up, and our Economic Development Director for helping with that. Another thing I wanted to report on is we, we hosted another event here recently, and that was the Stepping Up Event, the Annual Stepping Up Event that is held on the steps of our historic courthouse here. You see a photo there on the screen now. What you're looking at is 366 pairs of shoes. The Family Place, a local children and family nonprofit organization here in the valley, holds this event annually as, as part of Child Abuse Prevention Month. That's also what May is recognized as. And those 366 pairs of shoes represent the 366 substantiated cases of child abuse or neglect that happened in our county last year. And if you look at the shoes, I think it's a powerful symbol. If you look at the size of some of those shoes, I think that's equally powerful. Yeah, you can see the picture there of me holding up a tiny pair of shoes. This is an important cause in our, in our county, and I would encourage you to check out the website of, of The Family Place for information about resources that they have. And it, it was a great event. We had a, a virtual event. We had Representative Dan Johnson, you see there, came and spoke, and he has been a great advocate for our county down at the legislature, advocating for funding for The Family Place, for CAPSA, and other organizations within our county. So thank you to everybody who helped with that event. Something that's related to that, that I wanted to make sure you all knew about as well, is on June 2nd, coming up at 11:00 a.m., is going to be the grand opening of our Children's Justice Center. And this is something that I, I'm sure you've heard about before tonight, but it's a project we've been working on because our Children's Justice Center was out of space and needs to eventually be expanded into a Family Justice Center. Our Children's Justice Center is, is a facility that is used for victims of crimes, and when they are victimized, our goal is to stop the victimization and start the healing as soon as possible. The Children's Justice Center is a facility that helps us to do that by providing an opportunity for the victim to be interviewed one time, to tell the story of what happened one time. It can be recorded, and then they don't have to tell the story over and over again and be re-victimized. We thankfully have been able to use some of our, our county funds to, to build a new facility for them, and it will allow them to provide better service into the future. So there will be more information and official invitation coming out, but I wanted you all to know about the date, June 2nd, 11:00 a.m., and it will be at the new Children's Justice Center. It's over near Mount Logan Middle School, but we'll send you the exact address and details, but I'd love to have you all there. The next thing that I wanted to report on in my report this evening, and this will be the last thing I talk about, we had the privilege of having one of our United States Senators come to the valley, and he came and visited several locations. He visited one of our businesses, as you see in the photo there, Autonomous Solutions, and this is Senator Mitt Romney. And he then had a lunch with a couple of our elected officials, met with some of our mayors, and, and talked to them about some of the needs of our county and the cities in our county. He then went up to Utah State University and participated in a forum with students. And after that, he met with the Home Builders Association, and then he conducted a radio interview with our local radio station. So it, it was a good, it was a good visit, and I had an opportunity to talk to him about some of the needs that we have in our county. One in particular that I'd like to make sure everybody's aware of that I have asked his office for help with is an effort to put cell phone towers in Logan Canyon. And there is, there's currently very limited service on each end of the canyon, but long stretches in the middle where there is no service at all. UDOT is in the process of putting a fiber line through the canyon, and that would allow for cell towers to be placed through there. Unfortunately, we've received pushback from the Forest Service about that, and because of that, UDOT backed off of the plan to put the towers there. So I've asked for the Senator's office to help us with that and dealing with the Forest Service because I believe this is a critical public safety issue, and we need to have these cell towers installed in the canyon as soon as possible. It could be, it, it could be twenty minutes or more for somebody to get to a place where they could get a cell signal to be able to call 911 if there's an accident. So I want you all to be aware of that, and I'll keep you updated on the progress about that. I did meet with UDOT yesterday about that, and I guess that's something else I could give in my report. I met with UDOT, with the Region 1 Director yesterday. Rob White is the new director. I discussed with him a number of our transportation priorities here in the county, including the, the cell tower issue, and I, I think he's going to do a great job representing us in Region 1 here. And that's all I have for my reports, and I guess I'll be talking again in a minute under, items of special interest. Would you like me to just go ahead and move on?
Go ahead, Executive. That'd be great. Thank you.
The next item under 7A is actually related to a couple of the items that we just talked about, and this is a proclamation. This is a proclamation for Family Month, and I'd like to read it if, if you would allow me to. It says, "Whereas strong, healthy, and happy families are the foundation of society, and whereas we depend on families to protect us and provide our needs from the time we are born, and whereas parents are often the most powerful support system for children, and whereas we can reduce the likelihood of child abuse and neglect by increasing protective factors such as providing parents with support in times of need, enhancing parental resilience, providing options for social connections, facilitating community knowledge of parenting and child development, and supporting the development and well-being of children. And whereas the Utah Association of Family Support Centers serves as a critical resource for families during times of high stress, emergency, or crisis by offering support, crisis rescue nurseries, and education, now therefore I, David Zook, Cache County Executive, do hereby proclaim May 9th, 2021 through June 20th, 2021, as Family Month throughout Cache County, and commend this observance to all of our citizens." So you'll notice those two dates there, May 9th and June 20th, that's Mother's Day and Father's Day. And Family Month is, it's actually a forty-day, about a forty-day time period between those two holidays, and that's what this proclamation is for. I'd also like to highlight, as part of Family Month, something that was started a couple of years ago by The Family Place, is a campaign called the Be Kind Utah Campaign, and their, their motto is "A Million Ways in Forty Days." And what, what the, the push is during that forty-day time period is "A Million Acts of Kindness as Part of Family Month." So I'd like to encourage you all to, to, to look at that, look at ways that you, you can be kinder the month, and they have a place on their website where you can make pledges, and that's what they hope to get to. They've been successful each year, they've done it so far, in, in obtaining a, a million pledges of acts of kindness throughout that month. But I'll present that proclamation to you as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Executive Zook. Very good. Thank you. All right, 7D, North Logan City Request for Change in Raps, Funded Project Location. Have all of you had a chance to look at this and read this? Okay, does anyone, do I ask if anyone's here to address that?
Well, ask if there's any questions.
Does anyone have any questions on anything or have any comments on any of this?
If you'd like a brief summary, I could give a brief summary for the council.
Please, that'd be great.
Just in brief, North Logan had originally planned to place these pickleball courts at Elk Ridge Park.
Right.
But after some discussions with local residents, they would like to move the facility to the area next to the ice arena. The area where it was going to be at Elk Ridge Park would be within forty feet of a residence yard. The location they're going to now is more than 300 feet away. The primary concern was the noise associated with it, and so their request is just to be able to move locations.
Okay, very good. And there's no, been no ask for increase in funds or anything, they just want to move the location, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, very good. I'm glad you told me where they wanted to move it to because I wasn't quite familiar where that was going to go. All right, do, do you have any more you'd like to add to that, or?
Unless you have any other questions.
Anybody have any questions?
Alan Luce is here. He's the city administrator from North Logan, if you have any questions.
Okay.
I'd move approval. Simple request, and it makes sense, and...
Not only that, but we had been campaigned quite heavily by residents from North Logan, but they didn't want that there. I thought that would be great to have a pickleball court right by your house. You can run out there and pay a couple of rags, and then that, apparently, that sound, I wasn't aware that that sound was so fancy, but I think it's a wise decision on North Logan's part, to listen to their citizens and decide to move it, and we wish them well. I don't see any reason why we should hold it up, we just let them change it. My second motion.
Great. All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, there you go. Very good. All right, Department of Committee Reports, General Plan Status Update. Lauren, that's you. Thank you.
I forgot some papers, I didn't get those passed out to you guys. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep.
All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for letting me keep you guys updated on our Imagine Cash project. So last month, when I was here, I'd update, updated you guys on where we are at with the project. Currently, we're at the Community Choices phase of the project, and we have two upcoming open houses for, for the project. So June 1st, we'll be having a public open house from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Cache County Fairgrounds Event Center. This will be kind of an open forum. Both, both of these events will be open to the public, but this is kind of more of a general overview of where we're at with the project, showing folks so far what we've heard and what the existing conditions are within the county. We'll have a presentation at 6:00 p.m. from some of the plan leads and the consultants at that event. And then on June 7th, we will have a focus group workshop starting at 8:30 and going until 1:30 p.m. You can see those listed on what I just handed out to you guys. So that event is really to engage our stakeholders that we've invited to participate. So Active Lifestyles and Accessible Recreation, Economic Base, Environmental Stewardship and Resiliency, Regional Collaboration, Agriculture, Viability, Transportation, Infrastructure. So participants have the opportunity to sign up for, for those discussions. So we'll really, at those focus group workshops, be able to talk to our stakeholders who are experts in those fields and get feedback from them, to be able to start looking at policy implementation for each of those, and help to basically implement the vision that we've gathered from the community. So I encourage you all to sign up. You can go to the Imagine Cash website under the Get Involved tab, and you'll see an RSVP. So feel free to sign up for one or more of those topics that interest you all, and really looking forward to getting feedback from our stakeholders so we can keep this project moving forward. And coming up next after that, we'll be, we'll be working on drafting up the plans. So thank you all for your time, and any questions, as always, feel free to reach out to me.
Any questions for Lauren right now? Thank you, Lauren.
Perfect, thank you.
We appreciate the update, I do. Thank you. All right, very good. Looks like we have no Board of Equalization matters, no public hearings, no pending action. Okay, 12, Initial Proposals for Consideration of Action. Ordinance 2021-15, Amending Chapter 3.28 Assets of the Cache County Code. Bryce, you're going to give us some information on that.
You bet, and there should be some information in your, in your files on that. Basically, I'm really quite happy to have this. This has been a year and a half-long project that's, that's been in process. Started basically last year, there was some discussion about assets, and previous to this new asset system that's been built, everything was done by paper and taking it around to different individuals. And so last year, we started a process of putting some policies together about how we'd like to see a computer program that could track our assets within the county. And so we, we built the policies, and then Bart's team, they deserve a lot of credit, Alex Potter and Luke Barkle were the two that put this together to, to build that from scratch, basically. And the program itself tracks our assets from 500 and 500 and 500. our assets from 500 and up, and the program has kind of a smart feature where it will send emails to department heads when they get an asset that's added to their department. Sends a yearly reminder for department heads to check their assets and make sure that we have a full accounting for all of the assets that we have in the county. And then there's a disposal aspect as part of this asset system as well. And so, the policy itself is the safeguarding physical assets policy. Executive Zook signed an executive order implementing that as a policy for the county at John Luthy's recommendation. And now, this is going to be the last piece of that, which is going to be an ordinance amendment to our code to kind of memorialize what's taking place with the asset management system and the different amounts that are being required to track, and how finance will now be entering all of the assets into the system and then transferring those to the department heads. And so, did you have any questions about the ordinance or anything within the ordinance?
I might just comment. This really came about as a result of the Audit Committee and concerns that the Audit Committee had in keeping track properly of assets that the county has, and they safeguard, and maybe above anything else, protect anyone from the chance of being accused of doing something inappropriate. So, it's a good thing.
It's really a good thing. I know Bryce has worked really hard on it, because I'm part of the ordinance review, and he's really worked hard, so we appreciate all his efforts that he's put into it. And I think the department heads are really happy finally to see something like this come about, so thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So, with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I think we can vote to approve, or we can hold off another two weeks if you need to read any more of the policy, so.
Madam Chair, I would waive the rules and make a motion to approve Ordinance 2021-15, amending Chapter 3.28 Assets of the Cache County Code.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Bryce. All right, Executive Zook, are you going to talk to us about the animal impound facility, or was someone else, was Sheriff Jensen going to do that?
I can do that if you'd like.
Yeah, I think we were going to appoint a committee, and we have some names for that committee, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I ask a question here. On our agenda that was not amended, it had on 11, pending action.
Oh.
And that was for additional members for the Drainage District.
Ah, that's true.
I see one of our Drainage District. What, President Jackson? You're just over one of the districts?
Well, I'm just a member of the Board of Trustees.
Okay, the question that I have, that got bumped.
Yes, it did.
Apparently, he didn't know it got bumped, and so he's here. Are we going to have any action on that?
Councilmember Erickson asked if that could be bumped till next time, for a couple reasons, I think. One, because he wasn't able to be here tonight, and also because a couple of the applicants who we wanted to hear from wouldn't be able to come next time. So, that's why it was removed from the agenda.
All right. I guess the reason I brought it up, I kept looking over the agenda and it had been lost, and then I see President Jackson sitting back there, and I know he loves these meetings, and he just loves to come and sit through the whole part of it. But I guess we're not going to hear that until two weeks, and so, you can stay, or you can leave and not miss what you were came for.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate your efforts in this behalf and your patience. I'm a little puzzled as to why those who expressed an interest in vacancy have not been able to come and respond, but.
They're not retired, I think, is what they will tell you.
I see. Okay. Well, it is a busy time of the year for the whole of them, so thank you very much, and I will be back in a couple of weeks.
Okay. Thank you so much for coming, and we apologize for that.
Sorry for the interruption.
No, thank you. I appreciate that. All right, Executive?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. The next item that's before you is to appoint committee members to open review or proposals for the animal impound facility. And if you recall, the Sheriff's Office has been here a number of times to discuss the new animal impound facility, and there's been about $2 million budgeted for that. He requested bids, and those bids have been received, and they are scheduled to be open tomorrow. However, County Code requires that we appoint committee members to be able to open, review, and score those bids. So, what is being proposed is that Matt Bellado from the Sheriff's Office be appointed, Matt Phillips from the Public Works Department be appointed, and Chris Hurrell from Development Services be appointed, and we would like to appoint Cameron Jensen and Nolan Gunnell as alternates in case one of them is not able to participate. So, that's what is before you, and this does need to be done today, because the bids that were solicited have to be open tomorrow.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Counsel?
I'll make a motion to approve. The committee has nominated.
Second.
Oh, waive the rules. I'm sorry.
Thank you. And you seconded it, Gordy. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I forgot to say aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I forgot the rule to waive the rules.
The only reason I knew to remind you is I do it every time, so I still haven't learned.
All right, very good, people. Other business. UACT Management Conference, as we've mentioned, Executive Zook, and Gina, and David Erickson, and Carl are attending that, right? Carl?
I'll be down.
You're going tomorrow?
The afternoon tomorrow, and then just in the morning on Thursday.
Hey, very good. Thank you, thank you. Richmond Black and White Days Parade, Executive Zook, Gina, I'm not going to be able to go to that after all, I'm sorry. David Erickson, James Wink, and Jess Bradfield, right? Okay, very good. And as Executive Zook mentioned, the Children's Justice Center Grand Opening on Wednesday, June 2nd, at 11:00. Do we need to notify you, Executive, if we want to be there?
No.
Okay. Very good, thank you. Smithville Health Days Parade, Saturday, June 5th, at 10:00 a.m. Executive Zook, Gina, Carl, and David Erickson. I love that parade, but I'm going to be out of town that day. Anyone else on that? Okay. Lagoon Dignitary Days, what's that about, Janine? I don't know what that is.
That's the one that they have every year.
Oh.
And by elected officials.
Oh, okay. Wow.
We should be getting something on that soon.
Okay, that's June 13th through the 18th. Nibley Heritage Days Parade, Saturday, June 19th, at 9:00 a.m.
I plan on attending that.
So will I.
I will try.
I will try also.
Do they usually invite us to that, Janine? I don't think we did it last year. Well, last year because of.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, the Lewiston 4th of July Parade, Saturday, July 3rd, at 9:15. Anyone going to that?
I'm going to try, but I can't commit.
Okay.
For sure.
I will not be going to that one, but I'm going to the Hiram 4th of July Parade, which is the next one.
That's right.
That's at noon.
That's a problem.
I'll attend that one, and Nolan usually wants to come to that one, too.
Just standing in line waiting to say yes.
You just.
Because I can go to that one. The dignitary one, I don't think I qualify.
I volunteered for you because I wanted a buddy.
Maybe that's why I don't remember the dignitary ones either.
He put me for the Hiram one instead of the other one.
All right, we have a Cache County Employee Summer Party coming up, Thursday, July 15th, at 6:00 p.m. Do we have any idea what the council's role will be in that at this point?
That's where we flip hamburgers.
That's what I, yeah.
From what I understand, it will be the same as last year with the food trucks.
Okay. Oh, food trucks. Okay, all right. Good deal.
I wondered how we were going to handle that without John.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, North Logan Pioneer Day Parade, you can put me down for that, Friday, July 23rd, at 10:00 a.m. That's been a couple of years since we've done that. And then, of course, the Logan City Pioneer Day Parade at noon. You can put me down for that one also.
Put me down as well.
And then on our agendas, we do have a summer salsa showdown. Let me see, there's an invitation there. You can submit a recipe if you want, and they'll judge it. Actually, we will judge it, yeah. We will judge it. I don't know if I'll do that or not. Depends on how hot it is. So, yeah, we will judge it, and that is on July 27th. Do we know what time? It'll be a workshop?
I don't even like pepper. How am I going to judge?
I know. You and me both, Nolan.
It smells hot.
Well.
I'm going to get the drinks.
Yeah, we'll hand out the chips. All right, so it's going to be a workshop here then on July 27th. Okay, great. All right, anything else that we need to add for other business? All right, council member reports. We'll start down here. Gordy?
I guess I can't think of anything that I should report on.
Okay.
I might caution the council that I got in a lot of trouble when I brought up last meeting about one of the things that was going on in the recorder's office, and I got the recorder pretty wound up on me, and anyway, we had a good discussion, and I think we got it all worked out that they are indeed combining parcels. It's just that he's got a protocol involved that is changed from when you could go in there and request verbally to the recorder, and you get the parcels combined. Now, you have to go through a procedural thing so that there's a paper trail. So, I counsel the rest of the council that if you're going to do what I did, don't. Be a little more careful with what you say in a public meeting about one of our elected officials, because, you know, he wasn't here to defend himself, and I wasn't being mean about it. I just didn't think that what I'd heard at one of the meetings was right, and we needed to have someone that knew more about the law than what I did visit with him.
I didn't think that was derogatory as a discussion, though, and so, I'm.
There was voice to me that it.
Because there was concern there, so.
But I'm just cautioning you that it offended one of our elected officials, and his take on it was that if I had a problem, I should have went correctly to him and not in a public format. That's probably good advice. Training and caution you that I made a mistake.
Thank you, Gordy.
I need that weekly, so.
First one, that's pretty darn good.
Daily.
I usually go weekly.
Carl?
Nothing to report. I'm just very happy to be here.
Great, we're glad you're here. All right.
I haven't heard a word from you, Paul. Are you with us today, or what's the deal?
I am so excited for Barbara to get us back on to a short meeting schedule, and rub it in to Gina when she gets back.
High five vibe.
I'm just letting it go.
Well, it was a shortened agenda, yeah. All right, Nolan?
Flip. I'm looking at the clock saying, "Let's go," so I have nothing.
The only thing I want to mention is that I did go to the CAPSA visit of their new homes that they have. Very, very nice. I'm just, I'm excited that they have facilities and home for people to go to, and the people there were, Jill Anderson was there, and the director was there, and it was very nice. I appreciated being there, so. All right? Anybody have anything else? Adjourned.
Is that the record?
It isn't?
Darn.
Maybe time per item.